June 19th, 2023 to order, and if you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kiri, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Ellenbas.
President.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Filkins.
Here. And at this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ellenbas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward to please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk. And I also want to remind everyone that public comment is your opportunity to speak with the council, and we don't open that for discussion during public comment. Additionally, we have some public hearings this evening. So if you're here to speak in regards to those public hearings, you will have an opportunity a little later to be able to stand up and speak during that public hearing that you're here in interest of.
Conrad Ish, 828 Aspen Street in Cadillac. I'd first like to read a brief statement that I sent to all of council and Marcus. I will start by saying what most of you likely know. I am a conservative Republican. I was born in New York, New York, Manhattan. My mom checked my bracelet before leaving the hospital, even though I was the only white baby there at the time. I was raised on the west side of Chicago until high school, when we moved to Cadillac. I say that to explain, I don't see color, I see content of character. I've marched on Washington for human rights. I was at Riverside Church in New York for Nelson Mandela's first visit to the United States after being freed. I have met Jesse Jackson, Jimmy Carter, and Reverend Al Sharpton. The fact that you are holding an important city council meeting and public hearing on Juneteenth, now a recognized federal and state holiday, is an abomination. You may be the only government body in Michigan conducting official meetings today. You should be ashamed, and I request my comments go in the record. Since I wrote that, I have learned that one, maybe two, other public meetings are going on today in the state. So I just wanted to put that out there. Today, you're holding a public hearing. Public hearing similar to the one I was once part of for Cadillac Castle, and I had a great ownership interest. I feel my ownership interest rights were repressed by this city council, and I feel that they have been repressed for all the owners, I hope some of them are behind me, that have been noticed on this issue. It's funny, because today, we celebrate not repressing rights. Government is not about convenience, government is about representation. So it's convenient of you to hold a meeting tonight that you had scheduled. It's convenient of you to continue, even though the state just recently passed Juneteenth as a holiday. It's convenient. It would also have been convenient last year for the courts to continue, for the post office to continue after it became a federal holiday. They did not. They figured out how to work it out. And I think instead of a public meeting where obviously, in my mind, you're holding this public meeting for three investors who, without this public meeting, will not have the ability later in the future to move forward with their plan, you have no other choice but to hold this meeting tonight. You should be ashamed.
Good evening. Troy Baxter, and you know me by now. And I would say that I agree with majority of the statements of gentlemen that was before me, and I feel like that the council is motivated to beat a grant deadline. And that's evidenced not only by the meeting today, but also the number of proposals or ordinances that are being addressed that are shaped to further help the Cooley School project move along. Although the developer was given 180 days to perform, he was not able to do because of grant funding. And that is really what this is all about right now, continuing to help an individual get tax dollars from the general public in the form of grants and special consideration, so that in the end, some piece of property, referencing Cooley School, will be, by most people's standards, spot zone to accommodate an individual. After it's all said and done, if there's any profit from this venture, it will go to an individual or private investors. And that goes against what the legal definition is for zoning. You can't spot zone something that is detrimental to the properties around, which are all R2 zoning, with the exception of a hair salon that's operating under grandfather clause. So by this time, it is obvious to me that the council and the developers, well-respected in the community, and we're not enemies, but it is obviously being shown favoritism. And to the detriment of 28 homeowners that signed a policy saying they were strongly opposed to any zoning change that would allow apartments at Cooley School. So there may be some decisions, in spite of all of that, that are made tonight that would further this project along, but it's not near over, because every inch of the way, every opportunity, every day that moves forward, there will be another opportunity to express and position ourselves. Thank you much.
Good evening. I just want to submit our petition that has to do with the zoning and enforcement of zoning. We've got over 100 signatures in the area, a lot of them from Sunnyside, but in many other areas of the city also. And I just want to submit that officially tonight.
And could you state your name, please? Sir, could you state your name, please?
I'm Brian Gdalski.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Andy Van Alst, and I wanted to thank you guys for putting on that deal on Tuesday. Talked to a lot of the people. They were sure happy that you guys did it, and they were willing to listen to us. So they're not real happy about the situation, but they were sure happy that you guys allowed them a chance to talk. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Debbie Grimes, and I'm here just, you know, based on the community. And I've heard so many people completely against this project. Whereas I see that there is definitely a need for homes to be built or housing. And yes, you have to start somewhere. I don't see how this little amount of apartments is going to help one-bedroom apartments at that, most of Cadillac has families, especially in that area. I also don't see how, like, having a head start and things like that isn't more productive for that area, especially with the amount of kids. And I speak from someone who's a grandmother of a three-year-old in that area. So I don't understand. I don't understand why the community is not being listened to. I know that there are some for this project, but there are so many more against this project. So it comes into questioning for me as, are you guys listening? Are you guys hearing them? Are they not making a big enough point to come to you? We spoke about this, you know, even before, about the fact that this is now just a zoning change for this just one spot. And if you bought a home in this area, and then all of a sudden there was apartments put next to you when that's not what you were expecting to buy, how would that make you feel? Right? I know that I would not want an apartment complex going right up next to my home. If I had bought my home knowing that that was a possibility or knowing that that was what was next door, then that was my choice. But this doesn't become a choice anymore. This is what everyone just is slamming forward through. You know, $1,100 apartments, I don't see how that's even feasible in funding. You know, I was a single mom for a long time. And you're not even looking at single moms, you're looking at single people. So I go back to that, and I guess, you know, rhetorical question, why is, why is the community not being heard on this? It's really upsetting to me, because I have spoke to people. I have heard them. And I just want to know why you guys aren't hearing them. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. In this evening, we do have... Oh, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Deb Miller. And my grandfather and his siblings went to Cooley School. My mother and her siblings went to Cooley School. I went to Cooley School. I had a lot of cousins that went to Cooley School. I could tell you the families, there's some that still live in this area. And I do feel that you are not listening to the people. I think it's getting down to how much money you're going to get from that apartment building being put there. I think that is not the right place. That is all family-oriented. From what I understand, there's a gentleman that's tried to build, wants to build an apartment building behind Hexton's Flower Store, and he's just getting to run around for three years now, from what I've heard. I don't know if it's true or not. From what I hear, the company, the DK Design, and knowing they're all connected, the Pinnacle or Pinnacle or whatever it's called, it's all one group or two groups together trying to come up. I think DK Design had enough extensions the first time, and then he waited till the last minute to back out, and now you guys are giving him another chance. Pastor Troy Baxter, he hasn't backed out at all. And it's not like you're not going to make tax money off of him, because when he moves into Cooley, he plans on doing apartment buildings over where his church is now. So it's not like you're going to lose any money. And it is true what this woman said. I don't think you are listening to the people in the area. I think it's all about the money. And you guys keep on giving this guy more extensions, more extensions. And I don't think that's right. Would you do the same thing for Pastor Baxter back here? I don't know. Another question is, why do you approve marijuana stores, tons of bars, but you don't want another church built? And it's only replacing the one he's got now, so it's not even an extra church coming in. So I think everybody should think about that, too, because that's important. And that's all really what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our meeting that was held on June 5th, our regularly scheduled meeting, and then also the minutes from the closed session on June 5th. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellenbas.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes, motion carries. And so that takes us to a community spotlight that we have this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Our mayor pro tem is the advisor for the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council. And Councilmember Shippers, I don't know if you wanted to introduce?
Sure, I'd love to. Okay, so first, I'd like to introduce our youth mayor, who is Ava Mann. And Ava, if you would come up to the microphone. She's going to tell you a little bit more about the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council.
Hi, so I'm the Cadillac Youth Mayor, and I'm a part of the Mayor's Youth Council. And the Mayor's Youth Council is a student-led government group outside of school. And we put on small events in our community, such as the Movies in the Park, which was just last Friday. And then we are doing more events with the Earth Day every year, which is in around April. And then we do attend the Governor's Breakfast every year. So it's really nice to get involved in the city.
And if you are, yeah, go ahead. If you are or will be in the fall, high school students, stay there, Ava, because we've got something for you. Then please, on the city's website, you can click on the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council and find applications and join. And basically, it's a learning, we operate like we do, but we focus on their interests and what the youth want to see come to the community, so. So I would like to present Ava with a certificate of recognition for her involvement and leadership within the Mayor's Youth Council.
Cameras over here.
I want to get a picture here. Got it, thank you. Ava's just graduated from high school. Ava, before you go, tell us where you're going after high school.
I'm going to Central in the fall, and I plan to study business and marketing.
Excellent.
Fire up chips.
Good luck, thanks Ava. Oh, we have another youth member, youth council member here. Cora, you want to stand up and just wave to everybody? Here's another one. The others are working or out of town with various other things, but thank you. Thank you. Thanks for being here, Cora. All right. So that then will take us to the public hearings that we have for this evening. So I'll turn it to Marcus for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. There are three public hearings this evening. You will have two formal presentations. The first public hearing is regarding a request for a change in zoning. That presentation will be provided by our community development director, John Wallace. And then there is another public hearing regarding the establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district, as well as another public hearing regarding the consideration of an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate. Just to refresh council really quickly, this has been the culmination of many years of work. It started before COVID, where there was a collaboration between the city, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Networks Northwest, which is our regional planning authority, as well as the Cadillac Area Public Schools, where we were successful in obtaining a grant to study how best the Cooley School location, as well as the McKinley School location, could be adaptively redeveloped once the schools vacate those properties. That led subsequently to a series of public meetings and hearings, the development of an official report that was accepted by the schools, the issuance of a request for proposals that the school system then used as their way of identifying and actually awarding the project to a developer. And then here we are today. There was, at one point in time, work being done to lead us down this path, but for a host of reasons, including inflation and COVID and whatnot, and access to outside funding. The process basically was, was put on the shelf. With availability of outside funding once again being, being out there, the project is now moving forward, at least in terms of trying to position itself to be eligible to try and, and receive those, those funds. Couldn't tell you, Mayor, or members of the council, if that'll happen or not. But all of this is a necessary step in order to, to continue providing what would be necessary for the, for the applications. So with that, John, if you could explain where we're at with the rezoning, that'd be, that'd be great.
Thanks, Marcus.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm going to give a brief presentation on the rezoning application. And also Dean DeCraeger here is with DKD Development. If I should skip over some points that might need to be made, he is here to fill in the gaps. But this rezoning application is for the address at 221 Granite Street, which is the former Cooley School, former school building. The request is to rezone a portion of the site from R2 single-family into RM1 multiple-family residential district. And I'll show the maps later of where that proposed separation line is on the property. The property is presently still under the cap's ownership and would be transferred at such time as grants and other issues are dealt through with respect to achieving this project. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the way the building looks. The school is kind of a historic building. It's in the south portion of the city. I knew where Annex Building was built, which was built right next to it, I think probably sometime in the 60s. So a little bit different style architecture for the two buildings. Both of these two buildings would be on the portion of the property that would be rezoned. This map shows you the existing land use. You can see in the center, it says subject site. That is the Cooley site. You can see in the yellow is predominantly single-family buildings. And you also see in the nearby area, some of the red color, which is also commercial uses which are in the area. The zoning for the area is predominantly R2. However, there are also some B3 districts and also a P1, which is a parking district. These photos are just to give you sort of an idea of what those colors around the property look like. To the north, you have primarily residential homes. There's one somewhat commercial-looking building on that left photo. Not sure how it's being used now. It has been commercial in the past, but primarily single-family homes in this area. This home is the home that is on the west side of the site. If you look to the east, you have another single-family home where you see that fencing. And then beyond that fencing, you also see a commercial property, which I believe is the motel building in the background. These photos are the southern portion of the site. They've primarily been used for recreational uses in the past, playground, I think basketball court, and other types of recreation activities. The north part of the site, although we're not entertaining the site plan as part of this rezoning, they did submit a site plan just to give an idea of what the intent was moving forward with the property. You can see that the, you know, apartments would be in both the Cooley School building and in the Annex Building, along with some garages just to the south of the Cooley School building. But this rezoning would not constitute any kind of approval for the site plan. That would go through the normal site plan review process. The southern portion of the site, this is the section that kind of shows where the dividing line would be. It's not real clear on this graphic. About 190 feet from the north right away of Marble Street is where the rezoning line would be. And should property on Marble Street, on the remnant piece, ever be developed residentially, it actually makes things better, because we do have a width-to-depth ratio with some of the lots on Marble do not meet at the present time. So moving the, the north line of a lot for Marble Street a little bit further south would improve the width-to-depth ratio should the part that's remaining in the R2 district be used in the future for some residential use. And there's nothing being proposed on that at the present time. A little bit of background. Back in 2018, we had a very big effort to hold a community forum. It was led by Networks Northwest. Was probably attended by about 30 or 40 people. And we went through a variety of design ideas and concepts for the property, not only for the Cooley School site, but also McKinley School. And the main thing that you could take away from the community forum was that virtually all three of the preferred scenarios of development of the site had the Cooley School building going into either condominiums or apartments. There was a little bit of variation on what should be done with the south end of the site. Some of it was for recreation, others were for some cottage court, single-family development. But on the north side, it was, all the interest was in doing some form of condominiums or apartment development. The Planning Commission, at their last meeting, concluded that the proposed rezoning did meet the following rezoning considerations, and that was that it was compatible with surrounding land uses and zone district classifications, that it was consistent with the master plan. Uses allowed in the RM1 district could be adequately served by public utilities. The RM1 district was equal or more appropriate than the existing zone district classification. And finally, the request does meet the criteria required by the zoning ordinance for the intended use. The critical item under the current ordinance, and why the zoning line is where it is proposed, is the current ordinance requires 3,600 square feet for each of the units, and to get that amount of open space for the development, that line had to be adjusted to where it is shown in the proposal. And other considerations, obviously, one would be just the historic preservation element. The master plan does have verbiage in the master plan about our, the intent and the redevelopment and development of the city to respect buildings that have a historic past and do what can be done to preserve that element. And, yeah, I think the first item I already mentioned was just to meet the open space requirements for the, for the project. And I think you have a recommended motion probably in the, in your resolution. So that, that's all I have on, on the presentation.
Yes.
We're going to invite the developer as well to make his remarks.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. I'm Dean DeCraeger with the DK Design Group. Tonight, I'm representing DKD Development. My comments, I wanted to have them together, so I actually wrote them down this time. But they really apply to both the rezoning and the Oprah District. First of all, I want to thank the city council for hearing our request for this zoning change in the Oprah District tonight. As I believe everyone is aware, there is a housing shortage in Cadillac. This is painfully obvious to those that are trying to... This is painfully obvious to those that are trying to lure employees to the area, whether that be industry, service sector, professional offices, or Cadillac area public schools or CAPS. I want to give a bit of an overview on multifamily housing. You'll note that the new multifamily housing on previously undeveloped sites is not happening very many places in northern Michigan. That is due to the fact that the cost of construction, site development, and financing is so high that in order for a developer to even break even, let alone make any sort of profit, unit rental rates have to be set at levels that make them unaffordable to the local market. That is why projects such as this, which include the redevelopment of existing structures, are so important. There are sufficient incentives, such as the Oprah Grant in question tonight, historic tax credits, and brownfield plans, that make the project financially viable to project investors and affordable to tenants. This project has had some starts and stops. DKD Development has been pursuing this project for a number of years. We actually approached CAPS about buying the building prior to the community input studies and the resulting request for proposal. However, once the RFP came out and the community's desire for more housing was expressed, we decided to submit a response. We were fortunate enough to be selected to purchase the building. We signed a purchase agreement and we changed, we charged in to due diligence. We did preliminary design work, budgeting, overall project evaluation, all at our cost and risk. Unfortunately, our team concluded in February that the project was not feasible with regard to the amount of investment dollars required and the lack of return on that investment. Asking investors to take the risk on a project like this with returns that are lower than what they can get at a bank and a CD simply does not work. However, soon after we stepped away, the state of Michigan introduced additional grants. In this case, it's a grant called the RAP2 Grant, and these are through Michigan Economic Development Corporation. That new opportunity, along with a new joint venture with Pinnacle Construction, they are a construction firm that has a grant writer on staff, that gave us new hope that the project could work. So we went back to CAPS, and we are back here asking for this zoning change and the Oprah District. Both of these, as was mentioned, are required to make the project feasible. We are proposing to create 23 units in the existing building footprints. These will be a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. As part of this project, the buildings will be brought back to their original appearances. This will include new, historically accurate windows, new entry door systems, tuck pointing of the brick, new roofs, et cetera. The project will also include replacing the asphalt and sidewalks and re-landscaping. Inside, the main corridors will be restored as close to original as possible, which is a requirement of historic tax credits. And new units will be created in the classrooms and the gymnasium. This will include all new interior systems for electrical, plumbing, and HVAC, as well as the addition of fire sprinkling. Our team is working diligently to make this project work, and as part of that process, we are requesting the rezoning in the Oprah District, which are both required to make it possible. Does this guarantee that it will come to fruition? No, it does not, but it will definitely not happen if we do not try, so that's what we are doing. We believe that it is important to note a number of items about this project if it is successful. The current status as an ISOR, a target for vandals, and a safety hazard will be changed to a space that is attractive, inhabited, and monitored 24/7. It will be filled with residents who work in and contribute to the city of Cadillac. It will be returned to the tax rolls rather than being a tax-exempt property. It will have a traffic count that is well below what it was as a school or what it would be as an assembly space. Because of the improvement to the property and the increase in its value, the value of surrounding properties will increase as well. So once again, we thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council, there is nobody else looking at presenting in terms of staff-related presentations.
All right. Thank you. If not, then we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment. And if you would please remember to state your name and write your name and address for the clerk, that would be greatly appreciated. And public comment at this time is just in regards to the consideration of adopting the ordinance amending the city zoning map.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. One thing I do agree with with my last speaker was if we don't do anything, then nothing happens. And so that's why we continue to come and ask you to revisit again the wishes of this neighborhood. And I would ask you, and I know you can't answer me, but if the 28 households that have signed a poll strongly opposing any zoning change that would allow apartments at the Cooley School property, if that didn't mean anything, why did they get a letter to come? Why would they ask to respond? And there's multiple letters, multiple appearances that have been brought to this council. Also, I would say to the point that the building is an ISOR, it is a hazard, and that rests solely on the shoulders of Cadillac Public Schools. It's their property. They boarded up windows instead of fixing the windows. They haven't policed it, really didn't take care of the building. Same scenario for McKinley and why a lot of the other construction needed to be done to the school system. By the way, I did vote for the proposal because I do feel that schools are important for the $68 million to renovate, and I think that our our track is awesome. So still looking at Cadillac as a real positive place to be, and I really do like this community. It's been good to us. But I feel like we need to look at addressing the housing need. I know emphatically that there's 28 apartments scheduled on Wright Street, it's a lot more appropriate zoning, and 70 apartments scheduled on Kentucky Street. So a lot of those same dollars that Dean would be going for, these other properties will be asking for the same dollars. So when you look at a project that has 28 houses or neighbors that are opposing, that, you know, we will make sure that the people that are looking at the grants have that document compared to the other ones, then this property is not likely to be funded. So the other part of this is there's a move to tear Cooley School down. And Cooley School is 100 years old this year. And I notice although there's been a historical tax credit asked for, it's not actually in the document tonight, because if it's ever documented as a historical building, they can't tear it down. So I would say to, you know, get on one side of the coin, file through with what is right and what is true, what you feel in your heart, but the back and forth and giving people do-overs and all what I perceive as backflips in order to accommodate this particular project is is not in good standing. It doesn't represent good character that I believe the city really wants to portray. I feel like that the neighborhood deserves better.
Again, my name is Debbie Grimes. I agree that for every project, there's a course of action, right? As they specifically said themselves, the development company, they were interested in this back like before 2018 or in 2018. I may not have my dates exactly correct. At some point, don't you go around to find out if this zoning change is going to be something that's going to be accepted before continuing on with your bid and your project instead of like now, where, you know, at the due diligence, which I understand you don't want to spend the money ahead of time, I get that. But I want to know if he went around to the neighborhood to ask how they felt about that, because I'm pretty sure he did not. And it is also my understanding that in most of the building or or most of the projection, there's not going to be very many two-bedroom apartments, so. And those will be above $1,100 if there are. Again, I don't see how this is feasible for the neighborhood. Where is the parks that the kids need? Where is the Head Start that the kids need? Where is the building that people can go to for community resources, for things to do, keep these kids out of trouble? Look at the meth problem we have in this town. It's appalling, appalling. People are dying daily, and yet we're worried about a few apartments going in. The vandalism and things like that is happening because no one's moving. Now, if, again, we talked about this before, if he can't get his grants and you guys approve this, what goes in next? Is it going to be apartment buildings? What's it going to be zoned for? What are you inviting in? If this gets passed and he doesn't get his grants, he's already told you, he probably cannot go forward without them. What happens then? Are you guys thinking ahead or are we thinking about today? I'd really like to know where you're on that with. And then also, you've already had a builder come in and tell you that he can start immediately. What are you guys waiting on? I don't get it. You're waiting on grants? I guess it must be advantageous for you guys to do that. But you guys are thinking about single-family apartments, or I'm sorry, single apartments, not even single-family apartments. And you guys are not thinking about the kids in this community and what they need.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to any discussion amongst the council.
I would just like to, how many public forums were there where it was determined that multifamily housings were the best use of that property? Was more than one, correct?
I know there was one for sure that actually was on-site at Cooley.
Okay.
But I don't recall if they had more than one, and that was a part of the study that was done for how to adaptively redevelop those sites outside of any official city or school board public meeting slash hearing process.
Okay.
So over the, over the time of this matter, there's been a number of public meetings, both with the city at various board levels, including Planning Commission and City Council, public hearings, and the same would go presumably with the schools since it's school property, and they would have gone through a robust public process with their board to best determine, you know, how to, you know, set the property up for its future disposition, so.
And this was what the school board decided was the best use for the property as well, correct?
Correct. And and part of the, part of the rationale behind the process was to do what we could for both public bodies, which are both governmental entities, the Cadillac Area Public Schools and the city of Cadillac, to be as close to on the same page as possible so as the one public entity, the one that had control over the property, was going through and establishing a framework for trying to attract future or potential developers of those sites that would be interested in developing the property in a certain way, that it would be done in a way that the city would also be, you know, in in step with. Doesn't mean that there was any kind of guarantees given. All it means is that, you know, we were aware before they even, you know, hit the go button to solicit development proposals, we were aware certainly of what they were seeking proposals to be, you know, turned back in looking like, so.
All right. Also, I, you know, I, I don't think it's true that we're not listening. Sometimes we listen and just don't agree. And that's, that's something that I also wanted to bring up. And that more, I can't tell you how many times I've heard from people that we need housing. We need more housing. We need, we need housing for singles. We need housing for young professionals. We need housing for everybody, and here's an opportunity. And instead, you know, people, the same people that say we need housing say, yes, but not near me. So if everybody says, yes, but not near me, then we never get any housing. Know what I'm saying?
The other thing I would add for council's discussion purposes is that the analysis that the community development staff did along with the Planning Commission, that's then being recommended for you tonight regarding the rezoning piece, you know, to a degree bifurcates or separates out the potential use that's before you in regard to knowing that there is a developer that's wishing to do a specific type of project. And what I mean by that is the analysis essentially said that this particular area within the city would be appropriate for this type of use, whether it's through the DK Design Group or some other group. We don't look at who is doing it when that analysis is being done. We look at it as where's the location, what are the adjacent uses, what's the density of the area, and whether or not it would be, you know, appropriate as a part of that, part of that work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
I also wanted to say really quick, because I heard a couple suggestions that this was about money or that we were accommodating or doing, you know, backflips on behalf of a certain developer. But since 2018, this, this has always been about housing. Like, we're accommodating, we're doing backflips for housing. The 2018 study, Plan 1, Plan 2, Plan 3, apartments, apartments, apartments. We've believed for a long time that that's been a big problem in the town. It's a barrier to our success, our expanding industries, our, the hospital, the school, across all of these areas. We need housing for multiple, multiple different types of families and employees. You know, so that, that is what this is about. That is why I think we jumped through hoops. And, you know, we would do the same, too. I think it was suggested that we wouldn't be doing this if it was so-and-so or if we had, you know, a different, if the school district had decided to sell it to someone else, you know. This is a 100-year-old school building, like you said. We're accommodating also because we want to save this building. We don't want it to get torn down. You know, that again requires, you know, the accommodation, you know, the backflip. So that is, that is what we're here doing in that, you know, it's about the housing, and we would do the same for a different developer as well. So that's it.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance amending the city zoning map, Cooley School property.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Boss?
No.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. And then that takes us to our second public.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, this evening, we have our Brownfield and Oprah and, you know, frankly, consultant of the day here with us tonight to talk to us about the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption process. There are two public hearings, they're both related. One establishes the district, the other then considers the application. The last time the city council went through this process was actually not that long ago, and it was for the consideration of both the establishment of an Oprah District as well as an Oprah application for the building commonly known as the former Speeds Building off of Mitchell Street. Without any further delay, Mr. McClelland, if you would take the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I'm Mac McClelland, the Brownfield consultant for the city and the Brownfield Authority, as well as a few other related activities. Just want to briefly give an overview of the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act and also just a brief discussion of Brownfield redevelopment. You all are quite familiar with that. That will be another tool to be used, not at this time, but later on in the project. So I'll run through a couple of those. So just want to run through the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act. There are two components to this. One is establishing a district, and the second is the actual application itself, two separate activities, two separate public hearings, and two separate motions for the availability for a tax abatement for the project. You all know the site location, 221 Granite Street, and is the You all know the site location, 221 Granite Street, and is the, the proposed redevelopment for the Cooley School. It includes, the school actually was developed in 1923, as noted. It's its 100th year anniversary, about 21,500 square feet. There also was the annex that was built between, in the mid-50s or 60, 54, 65, with about 4,650 square feet that are available for redevelopment. The buildings have been declared functionally obsolete by the city assessor, no longer able to be used for their intended purpose. And there's an affidavit from the city assessor included within the application. The developers is noted as DKD Development in partnership with Pinnacle Development as well. And the adaptive reuse is residential apartments there. The proposed is, might not have counted right, 23, 22 apartments, 23 apartments of approximately useful space of about 15,000 square feet between the two buildings. As Dean had noted, there's a whole lot of work to be done. Roof replacement, insulation, the windows need to be replaced and match the historic requirements for the building. Tuck pointing, all of the HVAC electrical needs to be replaced as well, and fire suppression included, as well as the construction for the apartment. So extensive work to be done on the project. Total investment is estimated at about $4.7 million on the project. There's obviously some challenges with this. There are some significant abatement and selective demolition that has to happen on the project. The cost of renovation of the building itself as well. And the rents really, as they're established and the target rents won't meet the construction and operating costs for the building. And as a result, the project wouldn't proceed without some economic development incentives. There's two primary incentives that are being looked at for, at a local level. And that is reimbursement of abatement and demolition costs through Brownfield TIF. And the, oops, sorry, got a little quick on that one. Can I go back or can you send me back?
You go backwards, just hit the button on the last.
I did.
I took it for you. Looks like maybe it's frozen.
Okay, I'll just run through. We'll improvise here, so. Oh, thanks. Oh, and you want to do a quick review there of, no, no, go ahead. Run through this again. Sorry about that. I'll try and be more careful here.
Tell me when.
Wait, back, back, back. Back a little bit, one more. See, there we go. We'll run it from here.
Right where to go, Mac.
Okay, that's good, that's good. You started quickly, that's okay. You can start from here, that's good.
Doesn't like your eight.
Oh, shoot.
No.
On the lower right, on the lower right, next to the slide is to start the slideshow at the selected site. Just on the other side of, yep.
Yep, that's the one I was looking for.
Yeah, there we go. So, as we mentioned, Brownfield TIF and Oprah, which abates local taxes for the, for the investment on that. And there's a potential for 50% of the state taxes to be abated as well. That has to be requested and approved by the state. There's a mix of about 60% local taxes and about 40% state taxes on projects, so. The public, yeah. Don't, don't, don't go back, don't make me go back.
That was a joke.
Okay, okay, good, good, good. The public purpose is really to increase investment in tax base ultimately, as well. To redevelop an obsolete property that has great value to the community as well. And housing for what's generally called the missing middle. Not low-income housing, not high-income housing, but that middle area of young professionals that is severely missing in the community. So Brownfield redevelopment, just kind of quickly, there's a state law which provides for reimbursement of eligible activities, certain eligible activities on eligible property through tax increment financing, the capture of the increased taxes to pay off these costs. Cooley School qualifies as Brownfield eligible property as functionally obsolete. The eligible activities would include asbestos abatement, demolition and potentially infrastructure. And again, while local property taxes may be abated under Oprah, and so they'd be frozen at its current level, there are some increased state taxes that might be available for, for capture and reimbursement for those costs based on the investments that's made. So Brownfield plan is prepared and the target date is in October of this year. We'd be coming back to you as well. It's approved by the Brownfield Authority. There's notices to taxing jurisdictions. A public hearing is held by the city council and then approval of the Brownfield plan by city council. Also, in order to capture state taxes, we have to have the approval of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and Michigan Strategic Fund for those state tax captures. So just a quick note on the availability of another local incentive that will be coming back to you. Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act is a state law which enables freezing building taxable value at the level before renovation. So it freezes that taxable value. So as a result, the investments are not added to that taxable value. Local property taxes are abated again, and 50% of the state taxes could be abated. The abatement period is six years for the state capture if approved and 12 years for local capture. After that, those abatements will be removed and all of those taxes will come back to the taxing jurisdictions. And so that would be done after that time period. The approval process, again, it's a two-component process. One is for the district to establish that district in that area, which is just this property, in this case, in 221. Notices are sent to the property owners of the district and the assessor. The city council holds the public hearing, which you'll have tonight. And then you establish that Oprah district. The second component of it is the actual application for the project itself. That application is filed, has been filed. Notices go out to all of the taxing jurisdictions notifying them of this public hearing. You hold the public hearing and then you subsequently approve that application. That, at that also point, that goes into the state tax commission. And they approve the application and potentially approve the 50% tax abatement as well. So some key considerations is the project won't really proceed without these incentives. And there will be property taxes that will be paid that can go to the taxing jurisdictions after the property is privately purchased. The Brownfield TIF can leverage some of those local costs with state tax capture to bring in basically another state grant to cover some of the additional costs estimated to be somewhere in the range of $290,000. So we're able to garner and leverage state taxes as well with this. Importantly, schools and the intermediate school district are held harmless. They receive the same amount of taxes the schools do by the formula. And the intermediate school district, the legislation to the amendment was passed where school, the ISD is made whole based on reporting requirements. So they receive fundings from the state grants. So schools are held harmless. And then after the incentives, Dean may not want to hear this, but the project would provide somewhere in the range of $90,000 per year for all the taxing jurisdictions, again, 40 to the state and 60 to local governments. It really renovates a functionally obsolete billing and provides housing for a critical segment of the population here, so. Again, there's two public hearings. Is the Oprah District Establishment and the application for exemption. And then the action to approve the district. And just for technicalities, it would be good to open the public hearing for the district, close the public hearing for the district, act on the district resolution, and then open the public hearing for the application, close the public hearing and act on the certificate, if you so desire.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That concludes the staff presentation.
Okay. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing, or, excuse me, we'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing to consider the adoption of the resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Cooley School. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment in regards to the second hearing. And would anyone like further discussion or entertain a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Cooley School redevelopment.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
No.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. And then we'll go ahead and open public comment regarding the adoption of resolution to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate application for the Cooley School redevelopment. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the council for discussion or to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate application for Cooley School redevelopment.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
No.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is communication. We have one communication for this evening, Carrie.
Yes, we have a request to display fireworks and also a closure for the Freedom Festival on North Boulevard between Kenwood Beach and M115 from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM on July 8th, 2023, for the Freedom Festival.
I'd make a motion to approve the fireworks display and the closure of North Boulevard between Kenwood Beach and M115 from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM on July 8th, 2023, for the Freedom Festival.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
I get to vote yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. We have a couple of appointments this evening. Carrie, would you like to go through those?
Sure, we have a reappointment for Brian Kelsey to the Downtown Development Authority for an additional four-year term to expire on June 19th, 2027.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Brian Kelsey to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on June 19th, 2027.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
And the next one we have is a request from Theodore Clark to join the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on June 19th, 2027.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Theodore Clark to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on June 19th, 2027.
Support. And this was a great application, too. I don't know this person. They own a downtown business. But yeah, I really appreciate Theodore volunteering.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, the next thing, thing on our agenda is adoption of a couple of resolutions. Marcus, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, thank you. The first item, Mayor, members of the city council, is with regard to a resolution, essentially of support with respect to our submittal to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Spark Grant Program. As members of the city council probably remember, we relatively recently put in place a resolution for a community development block grant to help us with funding for the Cadillac, for the market at Cadillac Commons, funding that would help build us public bathroom spaces as well as install a new overhead door system in place of the failed wind screens that are there. This is an opportunity for us to basically get our, our name back in the hat. We are yet to know whether or not the, the first grant that we applied for through the MEDC will be awarded. However, we are trying to pull out all the stops as possible. And this is another program through a different agency through the state, looking at doing essentially the same thing, overhead door system as well as public restrooms. And hopeful that if we don't get one, we'll get this one, so.
Great, cover all bases.
That's what we're trying to do.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Spark Grant for seasonality renovations to the market at Cadillac Commons.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Ready?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Next item for consideration is your request for the amendment of our General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2023. I would like to turn the floor over to our finance director, Owen Roberts. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Marcus. This is the final cleanup for the fiscal year 23 budget, which ends in a couple of weeks. The first fund impacted, the Naval Reserve Center Fund, just some small cost increases. The insurance went up. We did a comprehensive property audit at the beginning of last fiscal year. And we added some values to, to various buildings that our city owned based on the recommendation of our agent and the current status of building costs. And so we did that throughout the city. And so we needed a little bit of extra appropriation here in the Naval Reserve Center Fund. The debt service fund, just a small amount where interest was just slightly underbudgeted. So we had to add some, some budget there, just normal debt service in that fund. The Market Capital Project Fund, this is for the netting that is now up and installed and has been so far very effective. It restores the usability of the facility that has no, no walls now. So early returns on that are as an excellent, excellent investment. And we did add some as well to the, the pavilion. It wasn't near the costs of this, obviously, but we added some down there, too, so that the, the bottom part of the stage isn't kind of constantly needing scrubbed, so.
A little wall of.
Yeah, yeah. It was pretty bad. So we're hoping to have resolved those two, those two problems. And then the IT fund, we're having to purchase some additional cybersecurity insurance. And I think Mike can probably emphasize the importance of cybersecurity insurance these days. But that's, that was again at the recommendation of our agent at the beginning of last year. So happy to answer any questions on that.
I don't think there's any questions. Someone entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2023 as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so that takes us to our final public comment for this evening.
Thanks for the opportunity. One of the reasons I came up is to get my phone. But I do believe that the council has thoughtfully considered the options in, from your comments on the backflips and apartments, 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 and the need for housing. I think we're all in agreement for that. And it's not that I would disagree with that. I think that we are all in the process of trying to resolve those needs is because I'm in the process of hands-on addressing that need every day with a group of people that I mentor. Training, restoring lives, working on properties all through the Cadillac area. In fact, I still have sawdust on me today from doing just that. So in addition to Cooley, we have half of a loft project that's done. And we have the Northwood and the Cadillac Pharmacy Building that are sitting idle and that are waiting for some of the favor that's been expended towards the current project at Cooley. So if then when the grants, you know, do or do not get granted for this Cooley project, I would hope that this council would come to the table and prevent, as much as you can legally, the demolition of Cooley School. If we were given the opportunity that we had asked for, Cooley School would already be polished. It would already be beautiful for the neighborhood. There would already be a head start program there. There would already be a park for the children. And so it was clear from the beginning, and, and I'm not faulting the school system for this at all. But it was clear from the beginning, they wanted to have apartments there. They clearly stated that when they had the public forums. We had three choices to put our button where we wanted. And it was three different versions of apartments, you know. And I suggested I brought to the table, what about, you know, our direction? Well. I brought to the table, what about, you know, our direction? Well, you know, our experts have told us this other way. And, you know, that's all legitimate. I'm not saying that's not. And I, you know, would be in the position of the superintendent of the school board, I would probably have had the same song and dance, you know. I really, you know, I would be right there in the middle of where they were going. But having said that, I honestly feel, when everything's said and done, and that there is a possibility that the grant funding will not come through, that we would still be the right choice for that building. And the, the square footage on the building is not 21,000, it's 15,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order for this evening.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Just a quick comment. We had approximately 60 folks come out to our public forum regarding zoning. The forum was highlights about the overall zoning code updates. Then we did what we kind of called a deeper dive on short-term rental provisions within the code that are being proposed in their preliminary draft form. We have not even had a chance, had a staff to meet and debrief all the feedback that we've gotten, and we're still getting feedback. Folks are calling us and they're emailing and whatnot. We are going to be looking at doing another public forum. We don't have a date yet. If I had to guess, it'll be probably towards the end of July, but I'm not really certain. It might be in August, and it'll just be focused on the short-term rental pieces of, of the code, not the rest of the kit and caboodle. In a sense, that piece of it seems to be, seems to be okay. So hearing, you know, loud from what the people want to hear and talk about, that's what we're going to do our best to focus on. So just wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you for serving the guests.
Based on, it is Juneteenth, and it's the first time that Juneteenth is on a Monday here, so it was not on my radar when we were looking at the calendar early on. But what I would ask is, maybe this is something we can take up as a discussion, to look at amending our calendar and recognizing this holiday like we do other state and federal holidays, so that we're in line with the moving needle.
All right.
I think that'd be good. Thanks.
I would agree. It wasn't on my radar, and I apologize and feel bad it wasn't, but I don't think it was anybody's fault or an intention to do something.
No, it wasn't that intended.
I wanted to say, I think all the discussions we're having in our community are good, and I think we, as a city, have to notch up our game in how we make sure we keep the conversations going. I'd say I want to thank the city, Marcus, you. I'm getting more and more calls on things, which tells me people are engaging more and more. I shot Marcus some information on the Diggins Courts that people had concerns with, but when that comes in, and I can share that with Marcus, he can go to staff, and there can be response. I got calls just today, haven't even had to share it yet, on the bridge that's on the McCall Walkway. Those seem like small issues, but it's about assets we have in our community that if we're all not conscious of our own maintenance of the assets we have, we forget about budgeting for those. So please stay engaged. The short-term rental issue, I wanted to comment on because I think the public engagement is so critical on it, and as strongly as people feel about zoning, it's so important to know that zoning is about what's appropriate in different areas, and that's why it's not that council's not listening. But for zoning, you have to say, does any particular change meet with the character that's existing in that area or will help that area reach its highest and best use? So it's not just a matter of what we like or don't like. It's about analyzing what's good for the community in relation to everything that's going around it. So we did have excellent turnout at the first meeting. We have people here tonight. If we could circulate that petition, information is what is necessary to do that analysis, so please, please, please stay engaged. I think people have seen, if you get ahold of me either by email or call, I'll call you back. I think the rest of the council is there, too. We're here. You want to take us out for coffee, give us your, you don't have to buy us coffee. If you want to go out for a cup of coffee.
Have coffee together.
It's like, wait a minute. No, but we can go out and get a cup of coffee and have a discussion about it. But I think one of the most important things in our society is disagreement does not mean you're either for me or against me. Discussion means we work through the problem.
And I would, I would just tag on to that, and I, and I think I've said it here before. You know, there are things that come before the council. The five of us sit here to represent the people of our community, and we have to make decisions for the greater good. We have to make decisions based on the research that we do, the feedback that we get from the community, and the, the work that the city staff does to prepare us for those conversations. And in most everything we do, somebody's not going to be happy with us. Others aren't going to be happy with us. But do know that we are listening, and we appreciate you coming here and leaving your heartfelt comments and letting us know how you see the project and what it means for you. Because we're here to listen, but ultimately, we have to make a decision that somebody, you know, may not agree with us on, but to Steve's point, it's because we disagree. It's not anything personal. It's moving the, moving us forward and continuing to live together in this really wonderful community. So thank you.
And a special thanks to Pastor Troy. I think your contributions have been thought-provoking, and your demeanor is appreciated. You know, I appreciate you being here, so.
Okay. If there are no other comments, we do have to go into closed session tonight. So if someone could make that motion to get us there.
Add our public safety director.
Okay, and that's not on here, so please add that to the motion.
I'll make, go ahead, have it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss a written confidential legal opinion with the city attorney and to invite the public safety director.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
To open session?
I'll second it.
All kinds of support.
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. We'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take this.